I started on time tonight. Okay. All right, it's close enough for me. It's 6:59 in many seconds. It's close enough to seven o'clock. And we're gonna, I'm gonna call the Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Thursday, February, Thursday, February 22nd. And three selectmen are present. Corin, our recording secretary is present. Town administrator is present. And Leroy Montell is doing video recording on behalf of the town. Our public. Okay, first thing on the business, on his own business, gentlemen. The minutes from last week.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from February 13th as amended.
Second, any discussion on the minutes, gentlemen?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please sign. 15:15. 7:00. Okay.
Who's 7:00?
Bobby.
No signature for you?
No, it's going. Okay, I'm gonna open up for public comment next.
You didn't have a non-public last week.
No, non-public last week. I'll start with Chief over here.
No, okay, okay.
Okay. We do have something for you later on, okay? Mr. Brown?
I'm good.
Okay.
Not at this time, Mike, thank you.
And Mike, you're on the agenda next. You have anything for the public other than...
Oh, no.
Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. And we're gonna just talk about, uh, next, first item on the agenda is my guiding Kelsey Road. It's regarding one of his posts and, uh, all right, Mike, I made some observations, first of all.
First, Mike, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Yes, that's fine.
I've been doing.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sitting in the public, I'd like to make a note for the...
But believe it or not, it doesn't involve you.
Oh, okay.
After, I have reviewed the videos. They have been reviewed by the road agent. They have been reviewed by the road agent. And Chief kinda pointed something out to me. There was a town truck that destroyed one of your posts.
Yeah.
Okay, there's no doubt about it. You have evidence of that. I fully concur with you. Uh, I wanna make a point that last November, uh, the town lawyer contacted us and let us basically inform the town that the town, I'm gonna quote that, will be allowed to continue its current level of winter maintenance on the disputed portion of Kelsey Road until the court renders a decision on its merits. So that was our, um, shall I say, our, um, driving orders to maintain that road. As with any road in Dunbar, private property can be destroyed. Uh, where, albeit a mailbox, fence post, rocks disturbed, and a rock hole, it can, it happens. And in this particular case, it's your post. However, as we go forward, we're still, it's indeterminate that what is the legal status of that ro, of that section? Is it still private property belonging 100% to you with no bearing on the town? Or is it a road by prescription? And so there's a, that's gonna be determined by the court as we proceed forward. We all know that. And so the thing is, I'm gonna defer, I'm recommending to the fellow selectmen that I def, we defer any, uh, remuneration or any, um, shall I say, uh, corrective action at this time. Because if it was just your property, say it was your fence, your, uh, your mailbox at the end of the street. The road agent would say, yeah, sorry about that. It was my mistake, but I think, oh, he, the thing is, it wasn't negligent, so it just happened to be hit. We hit it, we knocked it down. Sorry about that. Have a nice day. He waved off, and he waved to him, and you'd be stuck fixing your own mailbox. Town does not have a policy of, per se, of fixing private, I mean, of fixing, um, property that's kinda like in the right of way for the roads. And where your road is in a gray area, we're gonna wait until the determination. And I encourage you, you can come, we can come back, or we'll make a determination later in the year as a court case pursues. And I hope you're happy with that, but I don't wanna jump to conclusion. And I don't wanna make a decision which is the, um, that will make things worse for everybody. So I'm gonna defer any final decision on it until the court case determines the status of that section of the street of Kelsey Road.
Did your lawyer send the judge's decision to you guys?
Regarding?
Last week?
Yes, he did. And also, another one today. And we're monitoring that. Uh, when I say we, uh, the two selectmen overseeing that, we're monitoring that. And it's proceeding, and it's making its way through the system. At least, that's what I'm seeing.
From what my, from my reading, and I went and I saw my lawyer.
Yeah.
The, uh, that portion's been decided. That, that is my property.
Okay. What would you, just, I think is, I'm not gonna make a determination tonight, but I wanna wait. We haven't got any guidance except that it's continuing through the court system. The, the suit is pers, is continuing.
Yes, but there's two parts to that, sir.
Understood.
The first part has been decided. That area in front of my house is my property.
Okay.
And... That's, that's what I've been, okay, but my lawyer.
If, if we give...
No, I'll come, I'm not...
No, no, but the thing is, once we get final, at least I get some guidance from my town attorneys, I will, I will make things right whichever way. It may be, it may be saying, Mike, sorry about that. Or, Mike, we're gonna help, we're gonna reimburse you for the post. I, I don't know which way we wanna go at this point. And I'm not prepared to make a decision at this point. But the thing is, it appears to me, you have some information, maybe more to your side, that was private property that may have been damaged. It wasn't in anybody's right of way. It was still your private property. So be it. But I'm wait, I gotta wait for the town attorney to let me know that. So the thing is, I'm not putting it, I'm not saying no, but I'm not saying yes either.
All right, well, I haven't... I'm sure if your attorney sent you a letter, he'll be sending my attorney a letter, and I'll get a chance to review that. I'm just... Last Thursday, I had gotten that letter that it had been decided.
Right, and well, the thing is, there's still some issues, the part two's still going forward.
Right.
The, the mention, no action needed at this time.
Right.
It's the only directive.
That's the only directive.
Right.
So, the thing is, but I want you to understand that I'm not saying no to you tonight either.
Okay, well, I don't, I didn't expect the post to get replaced just yet, 'cause I'm sure there's still frost somewhere.
Absolutely, so I'm hoping that will give us some time for the, uh, for this to be resolved in a fair and equal manner. And I hope that's what the court's gonna be for.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, our attorney hasn't taken a position. He's monitoring what is happening. And so to make sure that there's not, no additional or whatever, until we hear from him that, you know, what it is it is, then we, it's easier for us to make a decision, so.
So I, I feel like my hands are like almost tied, is I don't have all the facts in front of me at this time where we can make a decision, um, uh, to support or deny you. And, but the thing is, and it will, it's gonna center around two things. Uh, again, is that a road or is it a piece of private property? And that's how we're viewing it. And obviously, you have some guidance from your perspective, and I respect that. And if we get that, as soon as our attorney lets us know one way or the other, we can appropriately make the appropriate, uh, action at that time.
Okay, will I be notified by the town rather than me?
Would you, I can, I would be happy to give you a phone call.
Okay, that'd be great.
One up or down, I'd be happy to give you a phone call.
Okay.
And if I'm not available, I'm gonna ask Bob, if I don't get elected for some reason, I'm gonna ask Bob to, uh, to, uh, make the phone call while we...
I don't have any problem doing that. I would do that anyways.
Okay. Okay. I, I think that's courtesy.
Okay.
And for the record, we'll, we'll call him as soon as we have a decision. And the thing is, uh, but you know how the courts work and how the lawyers work.
Yeah.
Slowly.
Well, I've gotten some experience with that.
Someone mentioned to me the other day that, uh, I was at the planning board, and they said, uh, just out of humor, I thought, he said, and this is to Dave too, real estate disputes are supposed to rise to the top. Boy, there must be a hell of a lot of real estate disputes out there, because it's, obviously, it's been months and months. And, uh, so that was the planning board's, uh, perspective on it, and he just mentioned to me, he said, Mike, uh, but real estate disputes are supposed to rise to the top and be adjudicated quickly. This has obviously taken a long time. And, uh, one reason is because of the, of, of course, we know in December, the judge recused himself.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have. Mike, do you have any questions?
No, not about that.
Okay.
Uh, I had also sent in a couple of videos, uh, showing Dave and all. He had plowed, he had plowed Kelsey Road, and then he came back. And, I think, the first, the 10:29 video. It shows him, uh, driving down. He turns and he pulls over by the turn, the, turn around into town in a belt. Next one at 10:30, that shows in front of my house. He angles his plow to the, to the right, which is towards the barn. And drives, he drives down, he plows, he takes a cut into the snowbank and pushes more snow over into the area in front of the barn where I shovel. At 10:30, it shows that he is, he is backed up. He's back in front of my house. He stops, or he stopped, angles the plow to the left, cuts into the snowbank, and then adds more snow to wherever I shovel out, where I park my vehicle in front of my house. This all takes place within 60 seconds. I see no reason for that type of behavior. I think Mr. Nault should recuse himself from plowing Kelsey Road. I don't understand how it's cheaper to pay him $100 per storm to do approximately 15 or 20 minutes' worth of work when they have plow truck drivers making $85 an hour who... don't have the, well, not that's it, right. Who don't have a vested interest in that section of the road where anything like that.
Okay. Hey, comment, Bob?
Yeah.
I can, I can ask the road agent to look at that again.
Mike, I can answer part of it.
Please, go ahead.
As the plow of that road, we opened that road up on a, on a larger storm three and four times to make sure that people with two will drive cars and get up and down the road.
Okay.
So that road will be plowed, you know, sometimes in the middle of the night or very early in the morning. Then it'll be plowed again later in the morning. It continues to snow. Even if it hasn't continued to snow, sometimes the snow softens up midday. And because those posts are in the way and make that very narrow to plow, you go back there and try and open that up as best you can, 'cause when your plow is angled at a full angle, trying to push your snow back, you can only get so close to the plow, to the post without damaging the vehicle and/or the plow and/or the post, as we can see. And the reason Jeff has told me he doesn't send anybody else down there is 'cause it's on that end of town. And because when they go down there, they change the sand and salt mixture in those trucks to sand only to do our dirt roads. It comes at a later time, and he likes to have those roads opened up so people can get to work. So those are part of his reasons of, of doing that. And as we can see, the big town truck backing down there is very, very tight to back in there with the posts.
I saw what happened. It broke a post.
So that's part of the reason that Jeff does.
And just to let you know that the driver did not acknowledge the, uh, did not realize he'd broken. Mike, I'm gonna ask you to persevere through this, uh, through the next month and a half. And hopefully, this will not be an issue in several more months down the road. I like to, I like to Dave, take Dave as word that he's not doing with Mattless, uh, actually, um, plowing. And I mean, I, as I said, I get angry when I just shove it in my driveway, and the thing is, it depends. I, I pray, let the plow truck go on the other side of the road before it hits my side. Of course, I always get messed up because he's coming on my side, and I get majority of the snow on my side, and I gotta do it all over again. And so, it's something, no matter what part of town you're in, you're gonna get snow. I don't care if it was Dave or someone else, you're gonna get snow on it.
Yes, I, I understand that, Mike. And like I said before, I've stared down many a snowbank in my lifetime. I've shoved plenty of snow.
Yeah.
But within 60 seconds, first the snow gets plowed to the right, then it gets plowed to the left. And it's not, as Mr., and if you review those tapes, he's saying that he, you plowed up the entire way? He did not.
I will review those tapes again, 'cause I was not, I was looking for posts. Believe me, that was the, that was majority of my mission.
Okay, that's not what those tapes were shown.
Okay, no, I was looking for posts.
And it was a week after I'd come up, uh, not a week, uh, excuse me. It was the storm after the, uh, the mailbox incident that had gone plowed in. Like I said, I've shoved plenty of, plenty of snow. I, I know that bad happens.
I don't have an answer for you there, Mike. I, I could talk to, I'll talk to the road agent and, uh, see what he recommends, and we'll go from there. But the thing is, I take it at his word.
A quick answer, there are no posts in the rest of the road, so you could open the rest of the road up much wider. So to get close to those posts, there's only one way to do it, keep going back by and get it up there.
And the thing is, I take you at your word, I take him at his word. The thing is, there's, there's truth there on both sides. And the thing is, uh, but I, he is not one, at this point, with all, with all pending lawsuits, not to do something silly in a sense that would, um, jeopardize his standing in any lawsuit that he's involved in, other than this legal action. It's not a lawsuit, it's a legal action. And likewise you. You wanna do anything to jeopardize your standing in it. And I like to take you, two gentlemen, at your word that nothing's being done silly to screw up your legal standing. And I'm, I'm taking the high road here, thinking that you both are honorable men, you're gonna do the right thing. And that's how I'm gonna leave at this point. I will talk to the road agent, and the thing is, I, I, those posts are kinda narrow. But it is your property, so the thing is, I can't tell you to take them up. And I'm not gonna go there, 'cause it's not, this is not the time and place for this at this point. But, but it is, I will review those videos again as courtesy to you.
Yep.
And, uh, I'll, I'll ask Bob to review them again with me, and see, see if we can see any, see what you're seeing, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
I was not studying it from that, that angle from what you bring tonight. Okay?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a huge amount of snow, and I didn't realize it. I had shoved it out, and I just happened to, you know, review the...
The tapes again, yeah.
Review the tapes, and then, you know, jeez, why'd you go past my house seven times plowing snow? And that's when I noticed it.
Okay. But at, at the same time, uh, Dave's trying to make it easy for the people using that current, uh, path, or shall we say, that, that entry, so they don't get stuck there. And the thing is, I have respect for that. I mean, that's, that's...
It's gonna be possible for police and fire and protection of our own homes, too.
Yeah, and so I, that's something I agree with. And so it's, uh, and then, as I said, no matter where you are in town, you're gonna get plowed in by the plow drivers. And you know that, too.
Yeah.
And the thing is, and the thing is, I don't think you're ready to accuse him of doing it on purpose. I hope not.
Well, I don't know if you come up with a better, uh, you know, better reason.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a plow driver, that's why I wanna ask Jeff. And the thing is, I'd get an opinion from him.
Right.
All right?
Yeah.
But the thing is, and we'll, we'll, we'll take it on the study. And take it under advisement, too.
All right.
I just don't have an answer right in front of me here. And the thing is, and I do take this gentleman at his word, as I do you.
Okay, all right, well, yeah, I'll just, in closing, I'll just, my opinion is, my lawyer's told me that that's all solved. That's, that's my property, so.
Okay. Well, the thing is, we'll, we'll pursue with our, the town attorney to make sure he's seen it the same way. And I think that's, that's, you gotta make sure that they're all seeing the words the same way. And I, I read that, Bob read that. Bob had to help me with a little better interpretation of what was decided. But we talked about it last Friday a little bit, but the thing is, uh, I just don't have the legal, um, vernacular to comprehend everything that was in there.
I didn't either. That's why I contacted my lawyer.
That's what I, that's what we're gonna have to do. The thing is, the guidance was, after he sent that to us, was a wait out. It's just, it's, it's still in progress.
No action needed.
Right, no action needed by the town at this point. That's the, that's...
They didn't state whose property it was. They stated it had to go to court for the full process.
That's, that's what I took from it.
Not that it was anybody, the town's property, or Mike's property, it had to go to the full process of the court system.
And so, may, I recommend, maybe we'll just, next time the lawyer calls you, what you have on the phone, ask him that question, right, on his nickel.
Yeah, it's never been his.
I get it.
I do.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, for note to the board, I'm coming back. I promised 10 minutes on that one.
7:17, we return to...
And that was not easy, Dave. Okay, the next item, I'd like to, uh, have a motion. Did the check already arrive?
It did. It's in the bank.
Oh, my God, that's wonderful. Okay, then I'll make the motion on this one. For RSA 31:95-PROV, Roman Nummer 3B, Paragraph B. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the donation from Stas and Alida Zopas, Zopa, in the amount of $350 for REITs across Dunbar. I'd second that motion. Any further discussion? I'd just like to say thank you to Zopas. They've been generous to the entire, to many, many activities in the community. And if they're listening, thank you to the Zopas family. And, uh, all in favor? Aye. Okay, Lean, you're on. You'll sign the final warrant?
That's correct. Um, in order to comply with the state laws of posting the warrant and the budget, I have to do that by next Monday, so before you, you have the final version of the MS 636, which is the budget through the Department of Revenues. For, um, everything that's at the flags. You need to grab the budget and the warrant?
I did grab the budget.
Okay, and then the...
This is, this little one right here. This is, this is the real estate.
That's for Lean and Purp, yeah.
It's not this one?
No, no, that's, this is our work copy for determinate.
Okay.
That is not that one. We have to actually sign the warrant and, uh, so it can be posted appropriately. Those are two good reasons. I'm gonna get a plow truck and a plow, so I can become familiar with plowing.
Why don't you come for a ride next plow store?
No, I wanna do it by myself.
I'll let you plow. You see how close you can get to that post?
Well, I tell ya, the, I mean, it's not, it's not Jeff's truck. Who's the big, the big huge truck? The big huge when they're like, like, make a tax.
Bill Nichols.
Bill Nichols' truck comes down and says, please be on the other side. Please be on the other side.
You're right, though. Everybody has to clean up after they come by.
There are four sets. Comfort needs an original. Posting needs the original. DRA needs an original.
Now, where was this?
It was right in front of the basket.
Okay, now it's in the basket.
It just, well, it was on the basket at one time, but it got moved over.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, it is nothing new.
Nope.
We just went through everything, so we just require our signatures as we go through. So I'm gonna start signing. Oh, my God.
There's three sp, uh...
Free signatures per?
Per, or whatever. I'm out of practice, just... And that will get posted tomorrow. Two public places. Now, also upload it to the website.
And this is a, uh...
On the front page. That would be this, um, form provided by the Department of Revenue with our budget, our operating budget numbers and warrants.
We better pass them all out, and then we'll sort.
Uh, share them all. Uh, more than one copy?
Four copies.
Four copies.
Four sets, you have to sign.
Four sets completely.
I see a mistake on the numbers.
You're kidding.
Yeah, yeah.
Your best bet is to hand them all that way first.
Okay. 'Cause we're gonna have one complete set, then we're gonna have to go through all again. So I'll do it on the second set, that way, okay?
You're kidding.
Just the front sheet on that one?
Yeah. Plow one.
Both of them are stapled together. One is not, so that it can get scanned and uploaded to the DRA. And they request an original 20 days after town meeting.
Just the top.
And this was...
That should be the second, other part for that.
Yeah, this is the second one, right?
That's the first.
This one goes here.
Yes, that's the first.
You haven't signed anything for the town forest yet, right?
We'll put it up aside, then I'll...
Yeah, I'm gonna verify that they're all signed. Yeah, thank you.
Request from town forests to sign a purchase of real estate. I'm just gonna put this right up here.
We'll get four sites.
Yep.
Yes, do you owe, miss, miss?
That's that one? Showings, it's one.
Yep, it's top, top page. Just the top page? Okay, gentlemen. You thought your grants were bad? Yeah. Well, Chris is working on another one for you, so. Okay. Grants are good. Grants are good, yeah. There's another highway safety one just came out, so we'll be working on that. I, I, I'll talk later, but, but you may go and, what else? Okay, Corin, we just signed the final warrant in the MS 636 for official postalizing.
All right, we got it down.
Okay.
We got a little heading for change.
Unbelievable. Okay. What have you all said? Okay, continuing down. Uh, I have a request to, uh, from the town, from the town forests committee to sign a, a purchase agreement. This is, I have to sign it, but you gentlemen are, apply eye on it. And I think it's, there's no motion, 'cause it's their money, but I think it's, uh, they're buying a piece of parcel from, Marion Crosby selling a piece of parcel to the town. With Forest Point. You can pick at that, and then I'll sign it.
The location of the parcel is, um, along a dike on Concord Stage Road. And I think the backside of it abuts to the transfer station. It doesn't? Oh, I stand corrected.
It's on the other side of the road, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's actually on the same side of the road.
As a transfer station?
Yeah, heading to the transfer station on the right-hand side.
Oh, it is.
And the funds that will be used to purchase this land is town forest funds.
Did you see this?
Yes, it's, uh, yesterday.
Hey. I, I'm the only one that's to sign, unfortunately.
I didn't read the acres. How many acres?
145. Yeah.
145 acres?
I think so. I know they're buying for 145.
Oh, that might be what it's on.
But it's a, do you know, recall of the town, it's a large, fairly large, it's over 60, but I don't recall exactly.
I don't recall exactly what that, which it is. Should be in that purchase, I don't think. After purchase, that's... 39 acres.
How many?
39 acres.
Oh, okay, that was more than...
It's still a good amount.
Yeah, they said that there's a pretty good harvest of wood on that.
145, 7.
I don't need to put any of that, just state that.
Yeah.
You signed it, yeah.
Yeah, could you double-check to make sure?
Yep.
All asset holders? Okay, going on town business now? I have mailbox and any general town business.
Are you doing mailbox first?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr.... Chief, if you're still available?
I am.
So we got your email concerning a citizen in town about a complaint against your department?
Yes.
Uh, just to let you know, I, um, I understand your investigation there?
Yes.
Okay, and Lean got a call from one of the involved parties tonight. She relayed the message, she was gonna draft the message and document the message, then pass the message to you from one of the involved parties.
I, I spoke to him today.
Okay, well, he, he leaned that message early, late, about 10 minutes before the meeting.
Yeah, well, 20 after 6:00.
20 after 6:00.
Yeah.
I stand corrected. But the thing is, she'll pass on to you, and we, we'll await your report when you find out. When you get ready to finalize it. Probably in a week, or within a week, maybe?
I, it's gonna take some time to, to review everything.
Okay, whenever you're ready, we'll, we'll set up a non-public session for the appropriate reason. Okay, they were concerned, uh, parties were concerned that, uh, investigation is pursued, and the thing is, I, what you told me it is.
They were concerned that, I think, that I was going to do that?
Well, it, obviously, we got a double, it was a double-pronged approach. Yes, no, no names, please.
I think you have any events, it's from...
Okay, we have a, uh, a list of, in the mail, it was sent to our email, but the thing is, um, this is a... Okay, we have a list of, in the mail, it was sent to our email, but things, this is a list from Rennie about some items that we have to be concerned with for the town meeting and voting. Warrant, you took care of, list of officials in attendance, I don't know, I'm not sure where we have to get that. We're set up a meeting, it'll be Monday afternoon at four P M. What are you, what are you, still here?
Yes.
I understand you'll be leading that effort for us?
Yes.
And you have two individuals helping you?
One.
Okay, who is that just on, aggressive?
Brad Jovell.
Okay. So what do you, we're gonna get another person hopefully for you?
Yeah, I spoke to Eddie.
Yeah.
He wants nothing to do with it.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll approach the other guys. Now, I met with Ed, so now I'll approach.
So you'll hopefully get two guys. Your goal is to get one more?
Yes.
Okay, and then the other thing is, we'll discuss the exact time.
It's actually noted there.
Okay.
Four P M and six P M.
Six P M, yeah.
They decided.
Right, because the meeting begins, it's an hour before the post close, but it comes down to a trickle so we can set up half the room really quickly.
Yes.
This is for the chairs and stuff for the meeting.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, stepping up the plate. Okay, and it says, general checking conditions, didn't you say you want to do the...
Just for the year.
Okay.
Is that a letter or you just?
It's an email.
Email.
This is stuff we reviewed last week.
And batteries, batteries for microphones, yeah, he just documented that first, which is nice. Okay.
Yeah, he'll give us the checklist of all the...
All right, the other thing that was in our mailbox was a, our warrant. And you want to go through, at least you want to make a tentative for work.
Yeah, I basically provide a summary of the warrant that you presented at your public hearing, and it's just basically to confirm that you all agree that there will be a speaker, that you're aware of who you were looking for. In the event the person's not paying attention, then you just need to announce that they'll come up and speak on that. So Article Two.
That's probably gonna be me, gentlemen, correct?
Okay.
And the thing is, if I fumble, I'll ask for support from you all.
Yeah.
But the thing is, I was told not to ramble, so I was told to keep it slick.
I'll probably have to come in there and cut you off.
Exactly.
I think you might need a few more lessons in that.
But Lean said she was gonna work with me to help streamline my presentation. All right, and then Article?
Three, the revale, typically we've had the chairman of the board of assessors this year would be Mary Lovell.
Mary Lovell?
Yeah, and I will send out a reminder that they're, they will be asked to speak on this.
And confirmation guarantee whether she can return. Okay, Article Four.
Fire department emergency vehicle, typically the chief, John Wigan will speak on that.
Okay. Article Five.
Again, that's another fire department equipment, John will speak on that one as well.
Okay. I'm gonna put, I'm gonna volunteer Dave Nolan as the alternative. If that's, I just figured this is a backup.
Thirty-four thousand or?
On the thirty, forty thousand and thirty-four thousand six, now on Article Six. This is for the top coat pavement, this will be...
Jeff Crosby will speak on that.
And Bob, you wanna be alternate?
I'm gonna be the alternate, sure.
Okay.
Jeff's always giving away.
I know.
Excuse me, do you want me to quit each decision of who's speaking, I just, I just write, you review the warrants.
And assign speakers, that's fine. Okay, Article Seven, again, that's would be Jeff and Bob, I'm gonna leave Bob as alternate. Article Eight, I'm gonna put Chief, Chief, you hear that?
I...
I'm gonna list you as Article Eight on the warrant, this is for the hired full-time police officer. Or do you want Chris to do it first, you'll be the alternate?
No, I'm the town resident, so.
Okay.
I should speak.
Right, then Chris will be your alternate.
Yes.
In fact, he should be there for subject matter, because he did a lot of his lead, Scott worked on that, as far as the minutia.
Yes, he knows a lot of it, he's very good with a lot of the details.
Okay, we'll ask him, if he's gonna speak, we have to ask permission from the voters, if I recall. And we can do that if we need to have him speak on any, speak on any particular subject, reference to that. Okay, Article Nine. Okay.
That's the truck.
Transfer station.
Yeah, Patrick.
Woody?
Yeah, that'll be you.
I'll be the backup if need be.
Okay, Dave will be the backup. Do you want, you know the slides I showed, do you want me to go through the slides quickly? Would that be important, or just have them out there and you can talk to it?
Sometimes there's been mixed reactions about slide programs and how we...
But the thing is, at least it can be behind you, but another, nothing's gotta be said about the slides, but people will say, "This is what we're replacing, and this is why we're replacing it," and then you talk your spiel, but it'll be behind you.
You also have the people that are gonna say, "This is what we're replacing?" It's the same words, just use differently.
Yeah.
I think, I think on that particular truck, I think we should forego the slideshow myself.
Okay.
I think we will.
We could be prepared to have them there, but no.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't even, I would let that stand or fail on its own without the slideshow. I don't think the pictures show enough detail that would warrant the dollar value that they're looking for without being able to see the truck. The pictures don't do it justice, I don't believe.
Can you drive the truck there that day? The white truck?
Oh, the white truck?
Yeah.
No, I don't think.
It doesn't matter.
No, the thing is, sometimes it's, sometimes it's in presentation.
No, we're not gonna be going outside to look at the truck.
No, I know, but the thing is, people can see it on the way in.
No, I think that, I think that that slideshow with that truck, even the pictures I saw as a selectmen, don't do justice to the, to the... And the other thing is, people can't look at the value of what you're investing in because of the value of the truck. You know, they're not seeing any quake.
But we have two trucks here, we have the pickup truck, the first Article Nine is for the pickup.
Yeah, which is a standard little thing with zero value or zero increase.
So that, it should be no problem.
And that'll be the backup if we, if he needs me on that.
Okay.
But the other one, I think that, you know, we should let that warrant article stand on its own without those pictures.
Yeah, because I, you've been enough town meetings, sometimes things are going good, and then they do the slideshow.
If it goes just a little too long, it goes the other way.
Exactly, I tell you what, if you start, if it looks like it's not going your direction, and people start questioning the amount of money for the Mack truck I'm talking about, then we can have a slides as a backup if you need to see it, what do you mean we gotta replace the Mack truck, what's wrong with it? You guys start getting questions like that, we can all show the pictures of the dock.
But we're repairing it, we're not replacing it.
No, I understood, but it does show the rust and some of the cancer in it.
Pretty much it's a matter of telling the facts that, you know, this is, this is this, this is this, and those numbers are budgetary numbers.
And it shows it only going down.
No vendor is gonna give you an actual number, not when they know you gotta go to bid.
Okay.
The body doesn't show the rust well enough, and the paint, it only goes down the primer, and people are gonna think that we're prematurely repairing that truck, I think, so we gotta be careful.
Okay. All right, we'll leave it at that, I just, I wanted, I wanted to get a consensus here, I think.
Because if we're, if, that's the only reason we'd be setting that up for this one slideshow, so I don't think it's worth setting it up at all. Right? Same here, because I'm telling you.
Let's go to the library.
Well, even that, if you explain it.
Well, I might have it available as a backup, if it feels...
But you have to set it all up to have it there.
I'm just...
Yeah.
But the thing is, it's just a matter of getting one projector, gonna use a chief's projector, and we're, and we're gonna have the slide, then it pulls down a whiteboard.
I think that, I think that that town hall or library, we call it now, is easy enough to explain because that's a...
Yeah, but the thing is, that's, it's a lot of money people asking to step up the plate.
But the positive is that you guys managed to craft a budget with an increase and being able to keep it flat. And that's the key. There's usually no big discussion.
Other than the warrant articles, there's no impact to it.
All right, then what I ask is, we won't use it, but can we use, can we have it in reserve?
I can set it up, I will set it up for that.
Okay.
I can bring that small table.
But the truck, we don't, we don't need that, we'll hold off on the truck.
Yeah, they, you know, pretty much about mine is, are you gonna fix it now, you're gonna fix it later, and fix it later is gonna cost a lot more than it does now, so. It's to be the voter's choice.
Yep, so.
Only one of you.
Wear you down for both, nine and ten, and backup will be Dave.
On both?
On both. Keep it, keep it familiar. Okay. Bob, I was gonna ask you on eleven, Article Eleven.
Yeah, I can, I can be, call if, I don't, Linda should be able to speak, right?
Actually, this is based on the board's explanation that, under the R S A, this should be decided on by this legislative body.
I'll speak on it.
Bob will be your backup.
So basically, the article was to be transparent, and the fact that there are two elected officials that are...
By R S A is required.
Require the governing body, again, if you choose to bring it up during this article, that in the past this raise was included in the operating budget, it may spur work.
I don't want to disparage any of the previous boards.
No, no, what I'm getting at is, a lot of people may feel that for this type of money from year to year, is this the way the voters would like to see it, or do they want to see it included with the budget? Because when you present the budget, you're saying that you're presenting a percentage of a raise, COLA, for every town, every employee and elected official within the operating budget. All I'm, all I'm getting at is, there's a lot of work involved with trying to calculate the cost for the C P I, taxes, retirement, and benefits.
Okay.
For twenty-six hundred dollars to be on there.
Yeah.
All right, well, this time, Bob will take the lead on this. All right, Article Twelve, Corin Pond.
I think the Corin Pond Association is kind of doing a good job explaining that.
Typically, we have Lou DiBirio speak on it, and he's already, I've already seen an email requesting, submitted to the moderator, requesting to speak on this article.
Can he speak on thirteen, or that was his, he wanted to push last year, too?
No, I think it was actually Bob, that wants to speak on this, yeah.
Bob, last name?
Leo N A R D.
Okay.
And I will inform both of those individuals.
Who's not, Lou's not a resident?
Lou's not a resident, Bob is.
Okay, so Lou's gotta be approved by the voters.
Correct, he'll have, I'll get that response from Rennie before town meeting.
Okay, just remind Rennie, but Rennie, but he's gonna get, go through the motion.
Yeah.
And fourteen, I'll take that.
This is the one where I say there's really no action on it, but what it does do is it clarifies the acceptance of the town report as printed with errors and omissions, and allows any of the report of agents, which would be anyone who submitted a report, to correct an error on their report, most of the time there's nothing, it's usually seconded by the selectmen, and then the vote is passed.
Okay, Dave, you want to second that?
Yeah.
So be prepared to second that. You know, I can see us, I make the motion to move it, and then Nolan seconds it, I'm standing there like, "Come on, guys, second."
We might leave it hanging, I'm worried.
And then Article Fifteen would be to allow the general public, no action needed or vote. Typically, just from looking at older annual reports, someone might announce that there's an event being put on by certain organizations throughout in the town, and they just bring up just general discussion at that time, so there's no action needed on that one.
Sometimes you cause for a good welfare of Denver.
And that is it. So I will send out emails and with their article language and to the individual that applies to, so they're all prepared. And again, if one forgets to show up at town meeting, then the selectmen have to step in.
That's why I gave appropriate alternates that way. Okay.
Does that take care of town business, like, you got one more you didn't sign that?
Okay, Lean, he has a draft, and we saw a draft today of the hiring process, this kinda like gives us a starting for a policy and how we hire and... We all saw that, Lean, do you want to talk to it?
Okay, so in last week's meeting, we have a situation where we're going through a process of hiring some employees, and Mike even brought up the fact that past this last year and on other occasions, there was always some kind of a hiring...
Committee.
Committee of some sort, a selection process, and you mentioned last week that you wanted me to draft up a memorandum to send to the departments, so that everybody would be on the same page and be, we'd be able to follow this on a consistent basis.
Okay, you can send that out.
Is that okay?
I have no problem with this.
No, we talked to a couple of departments, and that's how it's been done in the past, it's been done with.
And just to let you know, the town administrator, I put the word, if, I recommended when I saw this, if applicable. For example, that we have a pending deputy town clerk, that we're gonna be involved in hiring process, but it's gonna be a selectmen, and that committee we abbreviated, be a selectmen and the subject matter expert, the town clerk. They'll come to the board for us to hire, and I discussed that with the town clerk, and she's good. And the reason Lean is not on that, that's town administrator, because she's really, that person does not report to Lean at all.
No, even as an employee, that individual, the deputy, is an employee, which is governed and elected.
Yeah, okay. I'd say into my inbox, I'm gonna go to, go to public before you go to non-public, I like to go to public comment first, Lean, I'm gonna change the order here.
Okay. Did you have that in the mailbag? Excuse me, I'm losing my thought, did you want that under mailbox or town business?
Kind of mailbox, it was in that mailbox, Lean put it in the mailbox. It was just a memorandum, she put it in the mailbox for review. Okay, public comment, Leo, I'm starting yours.
Okay, well, first of all, maybe you should always have on your, on your agenda, have public comment before non-public session.
No, you just noticed that, I just changed it just now.
That way usually.
Yeah, it's, it's kinda like a reverse.
Yeah, right, so why not just post it that way?
Because it was a mistake today.
I didn't have it before, and I...
Usually it is posted that, the way it is now, no, usually it's this way now, and you always have to change it, but, okay.
No, so noted.
For you, I will do that.
You know, so you were making reference to the town hall, painting the town hall when you were talking about his truck, and you're gonna have the slides and everything, you know? And I think the slides are not a good idea, for one reason is that nobody can really see what you're showing them. Especially in that hall, they won't see anything, really, so if you're more detailed, when you're making that, if you're describing what work needs to be done, you try to be more detailed in what you're describing, and the scope of the work, that makes more sense, but if you just put pictures up, people see the coining coming off and things, but they won't really see that.
Okay.
You know, really, if you think about it, you know what it's like, even the, even the damage on the truck, nobody's really gonna see the rust or anything, you're just gonna look at pictures, what are you looking at?
So I think a good verbal description would...
That's what I think you should be, if you really feel strongly about the work needs to be done, then you should be able to present it.
Well, the thing is, it's part of the entire, it's part of the Article Two, which is buried in Article Two. But that's gonna be an outlier, because people are gonna look at that, "Why did it go up so much?", and I gotta be prepared to handle it.
Right, and that's why I say if you have a detail, a count of the work that needs to be done to it, that's a lot better than showing pictures, because you're gonna be talking about those pictures that they can't really see.
Gotcha.
They'll just look at it and say, "I don't see any problems with that."
And not just that, we need to be prepared to discuss not just that building, the transfer station.
Right, exactly, because that's part of your...
You know, work on several buildings.
Right, that's part of that package, that number, you know, so, okay, so that's just my, that's just my opinion.
Well, the thing is, you may be right there, so I think we're gonna take that into consideration.
Yeah, but I mean, that's my opinion, and Dave was right when you were talking about the truck, I see no value in putting the pictures up there. Because they won't, what you see in the pictures, you can see it, and you've took the picture, so you actually know what you were looking at.
Yeah.
But when they're up on that wall and everybody's in the back there and out in the sides, they're gonna be looking, it's like, "What are we looking at?", you know? So they won't get the impact.
Not even seeing that truck needs work, but if you look at the pictures, and like, the cap is only down to the primer at this point in most locations, and people are gonna say, "Well..."
It's a paint job.
We might be going a little too quick, you know?
Yeah, right, 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 no, it's, you know, so...
I think it's a good time to catch it, I think the pictures are...
But again, that's, that's your argument to make, see, that's all we're getting at, you know?
Thank you.
So then, another thing I wanted to bring up was, we had an issue on Tenny Hill Road last, yesterday.
Yes.
And I'm sure you guys are aware of it now.
Yes.
And I wondered why they didn't post that road prior to, because I was walking on that road before all of this happened, and I was sinking in the mud, the town truck went up that road the day before those trucks came down, he had to notice that.
We'll wait on a report from the town agent, town road agent.
Yeah, I know, I spoke with him this morning, at length.
But I think in fairness, every, every road agent is on the verge of doing or not doing their towns, and it becomes a long period of time when you start this early in the year, and some people still need to get stuff. Some people still need to get stuff accomplished within those timeframes, so.
Yeah, well, there are alternate routes.
Yeah, there are.
Okay, I pay taxes too, I don't like my road torn apart, unfortunate, because I'm on the very end, so it's not so bad for me. But you couldn't even go through with a four-wheel drive yesterday.
Yeah, it was bad.
You, Bo, Bo was just, Bo was probably the instigator of this particular issue, as I understand.
Right.
Because Bo announced they were gonna close effective Monday. And.
This coming Monday.
This coming Monday.
Right.
But they were, I think they're, those, those trucks were premature and electing to go through Dunburn, which was um, not what the road agent understood.
So, my point being, and I asked Jeff today, there's no state law that says you have to wait till March first or April first, you can post them whenever you want. And knowing what the weather was gonna be like, knowing the condition of the road, it should have been closed.
Okay.
And I'm hoping that it is gonna be closed very soon.
Uh, we're waiting to hear back from the road agent.
Well, again, I spoke with him this morning, and so I'm just telling you guys that you have a little more influence than I do. And I got a lot of calls from people on that road yesterday that were really bullshit. You know, when they, when you can't drive home on your own road, that's pretty sad.
No, I think it's a, a selectmen receive calls too, so you're not, you're not a, you're alone.
Right, well, you're right, I shouldn't receive them. So, alright.
We will, we will address it, though, we.
Yeah, I think it's fair that, again, you know, there are alternate routes, just because it's a little quicker, which it isn't. It isn't even quicker, it's, it's a longer way to go that way, so I don't even know why that all happened.
I can only think they might have been trying not to pull the hill with their load, is all I can possibly think, because.
Well, yeah, but they could go up thirteen, uh, yeah, up thirteen to Page Hill Road, to uh, the other end of.
Stay out of Bo.
It's way easier, it's way easier that way.
Yeah, I think they were trying to avoid that Bo end for some reason, I'm not sure.
Regardless, it's, it's not, it's not right, and it's gonna be.
Right, it's not right, okay.
You know, if you remember last year, we had the incident with the logger.
Right.
And we wanted to make sure that he wasn't traveling, so did Jeff, this isn't any different.
No.
You know, it's just happening earlier, a little bit earlier, but it is detrimental for the people, it's, you know, you've got dirt driveways there and you've got dirt roads. So, people that have a dirt driveway, trying to get to the dirt.
Heaven forbid there was an accident, or heaven forbid there was a fire there, and the fire trucks had to get through there, you know, seconds count, you know? It's pretty ridiculous, so, the other thing I wanted to say was, you know, um, since we ran out of meat at my house, Gail's been boiling shoes. And now we're worried for the cold weather, might be moving back in.
Yeah.
So, it'd be nice to have, save some shoes and have some meat.
So, what, he's gone.
You don't wanna take food at.
He's, he's trying to become humorous.
Hey, no, it was funny, I thought it was.
I tried to go there, I couldn't make it down your road.
You should have kept on the hill, I can't, huh? Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna close public comment, well, bring it back to the table, you can speak, well, let's speak first.
I just don't know that much about Tenny Hill Road, can you just, I think, it's, I gather, it's a.
Dirt road.
Dirt road, and there's logging trucks going through, making a mess?
No, 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 cement direct truck.
Cement trucks, okay.
Yeah, concrete, cement.
I got home from fishing at three oh five, and I counted at least three trucks going up and down, concrete trucks. And I, first one I saw, I said, oh, this isn't good for the road. And there was a fellow at my house leaving, and I said, be careful when you leave, because trucks are going up and down, and I don't know what condition that road is in. But up and down, that's.
We don't know, it doesn't matter.
Full load up until load down. And going up that hill, full load.
I do know that Goren Pond, even after we opened the road back up, did take a lot of abuse there, too.
Yeah, I was glad you remembered that. Okay, but we gotta get engaged with the road agent.
Yeah, it's the timing here.
Okay, Corin, back to you, anything else?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, uh, bring it back to the board of selectmen, I'm gonna go with you, Dave, first.
Just a little follow-up from last week, did we hear anything back on the library door?
I did get a response via email, and I responded back to him, and CC'd Mary, he said that he apologized, uh, the door was in, um, that he would definitely be able to work with Mary within the next, this coming week or the following, at the latest. And, but I gave him Mary's phone number and email, so they can converse and work together, so hopefully we'll see that installed in the next week or so. This was a short week.
I think that's all I have. Bob, to you.
I think I'm all set right now.
Uh, the library, just for the, for the record, the library had a great presentation on Bennett and Carne this week, and I just say, if they didn't make you work there, you missed a good presentation.
I did wanna make it, that, that's good.
It was uh, standing room only.
I was gonna say, that's one of the things that you're finding, cause.
What was it that's on?
Just a story, uh, as, as history buff.
History, okay.
Bob and I just seen it in the show.
I saw a lot of it in that turn, yep. It shows you how we're lacking space over in the town, when, I mean, we just kept seeing chairs coming out from everywhere, people standing, it was, it was.
Chairs were coming out of people's cars.
In the Lyra?
In the Lyra.
Wow.
Oh, yeah, it was packed.
But it was a, well, it was a good presentation, it was a very dynamic speaker, so kudos to uh, to the library for putting that on.
Library director.
Library director. Okay, um, I'm gonna close uh, this uh, public meeting session down, you know, we're not public, I'm sorry, I'll be back to you, I'm sorry.
I'm working on the RFP for the library, but it's, I have a template from the previous one, but I reached out to the two other bidders, that bid for the first one, explaining that some of the work has gotten done. And asking them if they'd be interested in looking at it and giving us a bid on what is remaining, because it's, it's hard for me to put an RFP together.
Without them expecting it.
Without knowing what really needs to be done, so I think that's the route I have to take.
You wanna review that with us?
Yeah, I will, I will, but I'd like to hear back from them, to even see if they're interested, then I may have to take another avenue, in either, um. I know that this was designed by a certain, by one engineer, but in order to figure out if the remainder of this work needs to be done.
Oh, you're speaking with score now, okay.
Go, to go back with, to go back to the original engineer and have him give, because originally what we did, in order to come up with this RFP, is we hired a separate individual to put an RFP together. And then we had the RFP, or the work that needed to be done, designed, or actually vice versa, it was the engineer gave us the plan. We had someone look at the plan and give us uh, bullet points to include in our RFP.
Would it be, would it have the engineer look at what's left to be done?
Maybe that original person that gave us the RFP?
Right.
Not, not Joel Fisher, but the person that designed, that put that, the.
The bullet point together, he can actually see what's done, and then come back to us?
I think it might be cheaper if we go that route.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'll see if I can reach him.
Bob, yeah, you okay with that?
Sure. I'd like to try and get that off our agenda this year.
That was my goal last year.
After we do that, to start the, um, to start the lawsuit portion of it, I think, um, we'll approach after this school meeting and stuff is done in this town. Portion of it starts slowing down, as we'll, um, approach Jeff Traxler, his word of taking a look at that for a wooden structure, maybe instead of a steel structure.
Absolutely, but the thing is, we need money first, we have to get, get something.
That's what we're looking for, and maybe this person, um, who wrote the original bid might be able to figure an estimate of what still needs to be done, if we followed that, um, original engineer.
Right, so you're gonna get that portion looked at, so we can.
Yeah.
The amount of money we're going for is not what we didn't pay him going for, what actually we'll take to finish it to specs.
Correct.
And that's, so that's the original engineer?
The engineering specs.
It was, it was, it was an experienced person who looked, knew how to draw up RFPs for this type of work. And I think we paid fifteen hundred dollars to him just to put the RFP together.
And now we're gonna just have a look at what portion is done.
Done physically, and then be able to tell what a new RFP, or what, even give us a dollar amount, based on, I don't know, if it.
Lean, if he comes up to look at the building, could you contact me, I'd like to read him out that?
Sure, yeah.
I would like to try and have a good understanding of what's done and what's not done.
Okay, that's, that's great.
I can make it up in there, Bob, I tried it.
You know, at some point in time, maybe we have to notify, maybe we have to notify Better Business Bureau, um, their failure to respond to any kind of, uh, you know, request from them, to come in and finish their work. Cause if we don't do anything, and people go to BP, and they're gonna say, geez, this is a good contractor, so maybe they need a blemish, too.
I think that would be a.
That, and their bonding agent, I think.
But af, after the lawsuit, though, I wanna get the money first and then back to the town.
Well, I, I'll tell you that, I think if, if you prevail, you'll get the money back either way, cause a judge is gonna tell you.
Better Business Bureau shouldn't.
That they have a right to.
I just wanted to.
You know, when you're, uh, documenting.
I don't think the, the Better Business Bureau just filing a complaint would do anything, I think it's just a, um, an application, yeah.
But it does alert other towns that this company is not necessarily the best to choose. It helps other towns, it's, it's doing the right thing. Okay, anything else?
Nope, the other one is to communicate with the chief on, with the call that I got, and that's all I have.
Okay.
Oh, um, just for your information, I anticipate having the town report in hand by next Wednesday, Thursday at the latest, so I hope that we can present the town report next Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah, and then it'll be delivered to the post office, and they'll have adequate time to, um.
Make distribution.
Mail, uh, deliver to all three groups.
Yeah, cause you know, if it gets delivered, this person probably is gonna read it right away.
You want me to make a motion to go non-public?
Yes.
Cause we're gonna keep the other media open.
Want me to keep it going?
Nope.